Okay, I'd like to call the meeting to order. It is January 21st, 2021. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please stand for the flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Adequate notice of this meeting was advertised in the Asbury Park Press and the Beacon on January 14th, 2021 by posting the notice in the Forkett River Post Office and the Lenoka Harbor Post Office, and by filing a copy of the notice with the Lacey Township Clerk as required by the Open Public Meetings Act. Mr. De George, roll call, please.
Yes ma'am. Mrs. Claus.
Here.
Mr. Scanlon.
Here.
Mr. Peters.
Present.
Mrs. De Sensa.
Here.
Mrs. Downing.
Present.
Mr. Polino. Mrs. McAvoy.
Present.
Next, we will have public comment on agenda items only. An audience member wishing to make a comment shall raise his or her hand and when called upon, state their name, address, or affiliation, and intention to make a statement. Comments shall be limited to agenda items only. Comments shall be addressed to the Board President. Comments shall be made on one issue at a time. Comments shall be limited to five minutes. No audience member will be recognized twice, and so all who wish to make a comment have been recognized. If you wish to make a comment, please raise your hand on your screen. Mr. Merman or Mr. Leidl, are there any public comments?
Thank you, Mrs. McAvoy. At this time, if you do have a public comment, you can use the Raise Your Hand function on the Zoom app. This is, of course, on agenda items only. You can also dial star nine on your telephone if you're calling in that way. And we'll give you a couple of seconds here if you'd like to raise your hand and speak on agenda items only. All right, Mrs. McAvoy, seeing none.
Thank you. At this time, Dr. Clark, are there any superintendent comments?
Not at this time.
Thank you. Are there any board member comments about agenda items? We'll start with Mrs. De Sensa.
It's sort of an agenda item, and Mrs. McAvoy, I regret to inform you at this time and the board that after reviewing my travel plans for this coming year, I am not going to be able to fit the negotiations committees into my schedule. So I'm asking to be removed from both committees. I'm very sorry, and I thank you for understanding.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. De Sensa. We will remove you. Thank you for letting us know. Mrs. Downing, any comments?
No comments at this time.
Thank you. Mr. Peters.
No, nothing with the agenda, thank you.
Mrs. Claus.
Um, I do have a question, and I think it was removed, but I just want to confirm Policy 0155.
Yes, thank you.
It was removed?
That was removed. That will come up next month. Thank you.
Oh, okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Mr. Scanlon.
No comment at this time.
Thank you. At this time, Mr. De George, private session.
Yes ma'am, the resolution reads as follows. Be it resolved that a private session be convened for the purpose of discussing confidential legal matters, including but not limited to the current caseload. The subject matter of these discussions will be disclosed to the public when the reason for confidentiality subsides. The length of the private session is estimated to be 55 minutes, after which the Board will reconvene and proceed with business. Action may be taken.
Thank you.
I'll make the motion.
Second, anyone?
I'll second it.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we'll go into private session, and we'll resume at seven o'clock.
We're back.
This is the behind-the-scenes magic that you always wondered what it looked like.
This is great.
And don't forget, it's still being recorded.
Yeah. Oh, so this is gonna pop up. We're not recorded now, right?
Yes, it's recording right now.
We're live. Oh, people can see us?
And hear us.
And hear you.
Class, if you look in your top, if you look in your top left-hand corner, it says Recording Live on YouTube.
Okay.
Yes, we are live right now.
Okay. If all the board members could please mute, we are going to begin the meeting. Welcome back to the January 21st meeting. At this time, we're going to invite the student representatives for their comments. Caroline or Caitlin, who would like to start?
Hi, I'm gonna speak to you guys about the January 2021 Matthew Blum Unsung Hero Award. So SGA is proud to name Madison English as a January Matthew Blum Unsung Hero. Madison is a part of choir, played Gretel in the production, the Brothers Grimm Spectacular all of them, and was a star player in the junior varsity tennis team. Madison is a freshman, but SGA notices she will accomplish many great things for LTHS. Madison is extremely creative and can take on any task she is given to her. Madison even painted one of the props for the 2020 fall production. Academically, Madison pushes herself to excel, working hard to earn great grades. It is for these reasons that Madison English is the January Matthew Blum Unsung Hero. Congratulations.
Thank you, Caitlin. Caroline?
Um, just SGA, we are still selling senior masks, and we took our yearbook photos.
Okay, thank you very much. Happy New Year to both of you.
Happy New Year.
Thank you. At this time, we'll have the report of the superintendent, please. Dr. Clark?
All right, thank you for President McAvoy, and congratulations on conducting your very first meeting as Board President.
Thank you.
All right, so Caroline, Caitlin, thank you. We so appreciate you joining us at our board meetings and for giving us your reports and for doing the unsung hero. So congratulations to Madison and to Madison's family. So this is where we would all give you a round of applause. And we will hope to do that when we are in person once again. And I'm hoping that that will be sooner rather than later, because I think we're all kind of sick of these virtual meetings. I know I am. But it's going well nevertheless. So I also want to congratulate our student artists for the beautiful artwork on. Tonight's superintendent's report is Marlee Lombardi. She's a Cedar Creek student, grade four. And the artist for our board agenda is Mia Labatt at Cedar Creek, and she's a third-grade student. So really colorful, and their artwork will join all of the other pieces of artwork here in the board office. All right, I'm going to transition to talk a little bit about school reopening as it relates to the pandemic, school reopening, and other related matters. This past Tuesday, I sent out a communication to our families, letting them know that we are approaching the end of the second marking period. And with that transition comes the opportunity for families to transition their children to a new model of instruction. So either from the hybrid AB model to full-time remote, or full-time remote to the hybrid AB. So I just want to, and we've already received quite a few responses. But for those families who still haven't done that yet, any families wishing to make the transition have to complete the Google form that was linked in the email that was sent. And that Google form is also on our website. We are asking our families to complete that by January 25th, so we can start planning for the start of the third marking period. And one thing I want to say, families that aren't transitioning at all, if you're all just staying put where you are, you do not need to complete the form. So I say that because a lot of the parents are filling the form out saying, nope, we're gonna stay right where we are, and that's great, but we don't need to know that. We just need to know if you're gonna make the change, and if you did, that's okay too. So you all know that we are on remote instruction, and we have been for the past two weeks. And I just want to reiterate that this was due to the significant increase in community-based COVID-19-related cases and quarantining due to individuals having COVID-19-related symptoms. And that all changed when our region moved from yellow to orange. And I can't stress that enough, that they're not our rules. We have to follow the rules that have been laid out for us in those guidelines. So it was not due to the cases of COVID-19 transmission occurring in the school setting. And we made that decision to transition to full remote learning to keep it that way, because we did see that the number of cases in the community were going up, and we wanted to make sure that we kept those cases out of our schools. It's not to say that they weren't in our schools, because every Friday, we have been updating our our chart, informing the public where our numbers are. That will be updated tomorrow, and I can tell you preliminarily that we are at 18. So that chart that's going to be released tomorrow or updated on our website will say 18. And again, you know, cases come on, but then they come off when people have cleared their 14-day quarantine. So we are ready to reopen for in-person instruction on Monday, January 25th. That's this coming Monday, and we are going to continue the hybrid AB model, which means that Monday is an A day, and that is on our school calendar that is posted on our website. And the last thing I want to say about this particular topic is that our school reopening committee has been working on a plan to reopen school to students five days a week. We're working very hard, and we've, you know, kept in touch with the board, informing them of how things are going. But, you know, I think it's important for our families to know that we believe that students should be in school every day, both for academics and social-emotional learning, and we've talked about that a lot. However, the constraints that have been placed on us by the New Jersey Department of Education and the CDC guidelines as they pertain to our school reopening plans have been immense. So regardless of all that, we are working on a plan to expand attendance. So more information will be forthcoming as to, A, are we going to be able to do that? And B, when we're going to be able to do that? So be on the lookout for that communication. And then I know a couple of board members are gonna comment on this tonight, but I just want to say that, you know, one of the things that we talk about often, especially in our superintendent's roundtables in Ocean County, we just had a meeting on Tuesday, is that there are two things that have our attention. One is the mental health of our students and our staff, and the learning gap that we know is going to reveal itself when the pandemic is over. And so we're trying to get ahead of both. But to address mental health, we are forming a mental health, social, emotional steering committee to put resources in place to address those issues that we know are going to arise as we start to expand our attendance. So we are going to be forming that in the next couple of days. And I know Board President McAvoy is very passionate about this topic, and she is going to be joining us on the committee. Still more to come on that as well. All right, at this time, we are going to present both our seniors of the month and our staff members of the month. And because our meeting is virtual this month, we've decided to change things up a little bit, and so we have a couple of surprises. So I believe, Mr. Leidl, we are ready to roll the videos.
Good evening. I'm Greg Brandis, Principal of Lacey Township High School, and I'd like to celebrate January's Seniors of the Month. First, congratulations to Madison Smith. At this time, we'll watch a video of her accomplishments.
Hi, I'm Madison Smith, and I'm January Senior of the Month. What I plan to do after high school is to attend a college where I can learn environmental science. I really like this major because I like learning about the earth, and I like learning about how all of its systems work.
Congratulations, Madison, on winning Senior of the Month. This is truly well deserved. You are being recognized for all the hard work and perseverance that you have actually shown over the last four years of being here in the high school. I remember when you were just a freshman, starting off. You were a very quiet and reserved person, somebody I really had a hard time getting through to, feeling that I had a good rapport with. And now, I really enjoy actually having all the conversations that we have about your future endeavors when you actually move on past high school.
My favorite memory from LTHS is probably when I was able to sit in the classroom with all of my classmates, especially my STEM ones, and we were able to work in a group and to come up with ideas or work on hands-on projects together. I really liked being able to work with my classmates and talk with them through different projects, and I think it's a really fun experience to be able to work with people.
Madison, it's been awesome having you in the last four years in STEM. And even though you are a hard worker, that doesn't mean that you've loved it. And that's why we had to institute a complaint jar in your early years, which at 25 cents per complaint has allowed the class to buy a yacht. Thank you.
Some of the clubs and activities that I participate in at LTHS consist of Interact, SGA, which I am the recording secretary for, NHS, which I am the Community Outreach Committee Chairman for, and sports such as cross-country, winter track, and softball.
I know you're gonna be destined for great things. You're goal-oriented and extremely hard-working. Now, if only you can get your confidence up to match those other characteristics, I have no doubt that I'm gonna be reading about you in success stories later on in the future. Congratulations, Madison, on winning Senior of the Month.
Some of my favorite classes that I took throughout my high school years were classes including STEM Core, which consisted of a lot of group projects, hands-on projects, and presentations. And I also really liked EP Environmental Science, which I took my sophomore year. I really liked that class because, as I mentioned before, that's what I want to do with my life, and that's when I discovered that I really like earth and all of its systems, and I like knowing the backbones of how everything functions.
Madison, your academic growth over the last four years have been awesome to witness, and I can't imagine what the next four years will bring when you're at college. I wish you the best success and the best of luck on your new adventure outside of Lacey.
Madison, on behalf of the entire Board of Education, we'd like to present you with this plaque for being January Senior of the Month. Your bio was quite impressive. All your activities you're involved with, your volunteerism, and your high GPA. We're very proud of you, and we wish you much success in your future.
Next, I'd like to congratulate Noah Hamouda as being named January's Senior of the Month. Congratulations. At this time, we will watch a video of his accomplishments as well.
Hi, everyone. My name is Noah Hamouda, and I am proud to be Senior of the Month.
It's an absolute honor to be able to congratulate Noah Hamouda on his Senior of the Month Award. I'm not surprised by this award at all. Noah was a very deserving student, and as two years of history class went by, he proved over and over his work ethic and his ability to complete any and all assignments that were given to him, including a trip to Spain to play soccer. And Noah would email me from overseas to make sure he was not missing any assignments or falling behind. And that dedication truly stood out to me, and I really appreciated all that he was offering in the classroom.
My favorite classes from my time at LTHS would probably have to go to my history classes with Mr. Tor Mullen, both my history classes with Mr. Mullen, I've had my sophomore year and my junior year. He really made class fun and enjoyable and made learning about history really different than all my other history teachers in the past. My second class being the exploratory business class I took with Mrs. Pierce my sophomore year, and the honors history class I'm in with her this year as a senior. She really teaches you a lot about life and what to do in order to succeed, and she just really makes that class a lot of fun.
Noah has a tremendous drive. He always wants to get better, always wants to improve himself. He would stay for hours after practice, working individually, asking me questions, asking the other questions, asking questions about the opposing team, what he thought that the team could do to get better, how he can get better. There was times where I would just be like, Noah, go home, man. Tomorrow's a new day, we'll figure it out. But I love that drive in him, I love that passion, and I know it's going to take him to some great places in life.
Noah, congratulations on earning Senior of the Month. It's been a privilege to coach you over the past four years and watch you become a leader on and off the field. You're an example of what students and athletes should strive to become here at Lacey. It's been great to watch your growth over the years, from seeing a young, overly confident freshman take the field for the first time against Barnegat, or watching you sing and dance across the stage in Guys and Dolls with Sky Masterson. Never lose that confidence or belief in yourself. That's what makes you great, and why I know you'll succeed at anything you say you're my too.
My plans up to high school are to study physical therapy, to become a physical therapist, and to play soccer for whichever school I end up committing to.
Aside from having a great sense of humor, Noah's also a very responsible kid and very considerate to those around him. I had Noah in class the year that I was in and out due to illness, and Noah was constantly concerned about my well-being and wondering how I was doing, whether it be in class checking in with me or sending an email if I was out for any extended period of time. When I would return, I would get notes from subs that would say, you know, Noah had helped to kind of get them going in the right direction. And it was just very relaxing to know that there was a leadership quality like that in my classroom.
My favorite LTHS memory is probably going to be my junior year soccer season. We went into the final game of the season being lower on the table, and we needed to win this game to qualify for the short conference tournament. And we went into the game, we went up 2-0. We got scored on again, I had both goals. We went into overtime, nothing in the first half, the last 10 minutes of the overtime. I ended up scoring the winning goal to secure our spot in the short conference tournament. It was an awesome moment to share with the team, and if I could go back and relive it, I really would.
Noah, once again, congratulations on being January Senior of the Month. I'm so happy for you. You deserve this, this is awesome. I just want to wish you nothing but the best in your future endeavors, and once again, congratulations.
Noah, on behalf of the entire Board of Education, we'd like to congratulate you and give you this award for being January Senior of the Month. I enjoyed reading about your awards in high school, and your future looks bright studying sports medicine or kinesiology. Good luck to you in the future, we're very proud of you.
Finally, I'd like to celebrate Mario Ramirez as being named Vocational Senior of the Month. Congratulations. And again, congratulations to all our January's Seniors of the Month.
Hello, my name is Mario Ramirez, and I am proud to be your January Senior of the Month.
I have had the pleasure of knowing Mario for two years while coaching him and mentoring him on and off the football field. Mario has always held himself to a higher standard, whether it's getting extra practice in, or watching more film, or helping his younger teammates. Mario's will and his need to better himself and those around him are some of the qualities that are gonna take him for in life.
My favorite class at LTHS has to be my freshman year's history class with Mr. Tyhanik. He was a great guy and a great teacher. He taught me how to make great notes and how to make amazing time management skills.
Mario, congratulations on your Student of the Month nomination, we're very proud of you. Thinking back to our time in world history, you were always eager to learn and take on new challenges, whether it was in the classroom or on the football field. Something that stands out was you would always ask, what can I do to be better? It's that attitude that's gonna help you be successful in the future. Remember, do your job to the best of your ability, and you'll never be disappointed. Again, Mario, we're proud of you, keep up the great work, congratulations.
My post-high school plans are to continue my athletic career in football and to continue my educational career in health and exercise science.
Congratulations, Mario, on being named January's Vocational Senior of the Month. I'm so very proud of you. Your work ethic and dedication has been shown over the last four years while you're juggling Lacey Township academics, as well as vocational school, and football, and wrestling.
My favorite memory of LTHS has to be the football program. Between the practices, scrimmages, and games, the coaches and the players, I cannot thank them enough for all the joy and memories that I've gotten out of my last four years.
Mario, I am very proud of you and all of your accomplishments. I wish you nothing but the best in your future endeavors, and congratulations on being selected as a January 2021 Senior of the Month.
Mario, on behalf of the Board of Education, we'd like to give you this award for being the Vocational Senior of the Month for January. Your hard work and dedication really shows. So impressive that you want to become an Olympic athletic trainer in college. Best of luck to you, and congratulations.
All right, congratulations to Madison, Noah, and Mario. I have to say, either the kids are getting really good and comfortable talking behind the camera, or we've just gotten used to watching them behind the camera, I don't know. But those were really interesting, and thank you, Mrs. McAvoy, for doing those videos, that was fantastic. All right, let's transition to our Staff Members of the Month. Are we ready, Mr. Leidl? We're back again with our January Staff Member of the Month presentation. So this month is a little different because we have been on remote instruction for the past two weeks, and so we were not able to videotape our staff members live, so we're gonna do this instead. So the first staff member being recognized as January Staff Member of the Month is Ginny Fitzgibbon. Ginny has been a paraprofessional for the Lacey Township School District for 19 years, and she was nominated by Matthew Holberg. So I'm gonna read a little bit about what Mr. Holberg had to say about Ginny. Ginny is one of the most compassionate people I know and with whom I have had the pleasure of working. My last year at the high school, I was assigned to teach history of rock and roll to the self-contained special education class. Ginny served as a paraprofessional in that class, and the program was a huge success due in no small part to the caring and nurturing attitude that she displayed every day. I would see her interactions with the students from time to time in the hallways, or when they would come to the performing arts wing for classes with Mr. Stike. They loved her, and she loved them. She provided the guidance that the students lacked elsewhere, and the true measure of someone's character is what they do when they don't have to do it. Ginny displays this day-to-day by keeping in touch with her former students, still trying to help them if they need it, and making sure they know she's there for them. She is one of a kind and truly deserving of such an honor. If you looked up the definitions of caring, kind, compassionate, genuine, you would see Ginny's name next to the definition. So Ginny, on behalf of the Lacey Township School District, congratulations on being named January Staff Member of the Month. This plaque is for you, and when I see you in the hallway here at the high school, I will make sure that you get it. Congratulations, well deserved. All right, and before we play our next video, I did have a conversation with Ms. Fitzgibbons today, and she was so excited, I hope she is watching. And I told her that I would find her on Tuesday and give her a high five and make sure that she got to hang that plaque proudly in her classroom. So congratulations, Ms. Fitzgibbons, we are so proud of you. All right, next. Our second staff member of the month for January is a bit of a surprise. In fact, the staff member that I'm about to name is actually working behind the scenes in assisting us with tonight's board meeting. And the reason I couldn't ask him to help me record the video is because he would have been recording himself. So the January, the second staff member of the month for January is Mr. Jeremy Merman. He was nominated by Allison Brannick, and I'm gonna read a little bit about what Allison had to say about Jeremy. Jeremy has such a positive can-do attitude, and I agree. This year, he has volunteered his time along with his students' time to come to the middle school to film our play. He has carved out many days in his schedule from December until March to come film our show. Without his help, we would not be able to put on a production this year. In addition, he has volunteered to help record the middle school chorus, as well as all of the school's choral concerts and string them so that the students can keep doing what they love. Jeremy has a positive attitude and is willing to help anyone. He never says no to helping and is willing to put his time into projects to help others. I'm gonna add to that because Mr. Merman has been instrumental in recording all things that needed to be recorded, from graduation to chorus concerts to the NHS induction ceremony, and so much more. And he absolutely does have a can-do attitude, and everything I have asked of him, he has just come right in and said, let's get it done. So Jeremy, congratulations, this plaque is for you. And the next time I see you, I will make sure to give you a big high five because we couldn't have accomplished all that we accomplished without your assistance. So congratulations, well deserved. All right, so Mr. Merman, I know you are there working behind the scenes, so congratulations to you. Would have been a little awkward for you to record your own video.
Uh, would have been a little awkward for you to record your own video, so that's why we had to, uh, sneak that in. And thank you, Mr. Leidl, for helping me get that done. So congratulations. Uh, I'm really enjoying the, uh, Staff Member of the Month program. Um, and, and you know, I have to say, uh, the committee got together, uh, last week to take a look at all of the nominees, and it was really hard. Uh, we have so many good, uh, nominations and, uh, we are going to continue this program. Uh, hopefully, you know, well into, uh, the next, um, few years. All right, um, so I have a couple of other things, uh, that I want to talk about. Um, the next is parent university. So we've been talking about launching this for quite some time. So I'm happy to announce that our very first parent university is scheduled virtually, uh, for now uh, for Thursday, February fourth from six to seven thirty PM. The topic is going to be navigating remote instruction, starting the third marking period strong. So we are going to have breakout sessions that are, that are going to teach parents, assist parents on how to better navigate Google Classroom and Canvas so that they can better, uh, assist students. Um, and the breakout sessions are going to be based on grade, so we'll have a breakout session for grade through one, two through four, five through six, seven through eight, and nine through twelve. And then at the end, there's going to be a session called Navigating the Parent Portal and where to go for technology support. Um, and you know, we know that a lot of the, uh, emails that we've been getting, uh, i- is about, you know, help. We, we need help with navigating the parent portal. So, uh, that will be the session at the end. So I'll be sending out an automated call, uh, and, and an email. Uh, the information will also be on our website with details about how to register for the parent university. Um, and I really, really, really encourage our parents to register and join us for, uh, what I think is going to be a very, very informative, uh, evening. And then, uh, we've developed some of our other topics for future, uh, parent universities. We're going to try to have one every, uh, three weeks, uh, minimally once a month. Uh, so we'll be rolling out, uh, those topics, um, as well. All right, so let's talk about the Lacey Food Bank. I am so happy to, uh, report that all six of our schools under the leadership of our amazing principals were instrumental in collecting food for the Fill the Van campaign in the past few months. Um, and in addition, donating money to the food bank. And in doing so, provided tremendous support for Lacey community members who are in need. Um, so not only do these projects help our community members, but it teaches our students about the importance of community service. So thank you to everyone who participated. Um, and thank you to everybody who volunteers, uh, their time at the Lacey Food Bank. It's just an amazing place and they've done so, so much. Um, um, strategic planning. So let's, let's talk a little bit about strategic planning. So this past Tuesday, we had the opportunity to continue the work we started with strategic planning. And it's hard to believe that nearly one year ago, we had just completed our strategic planning weekend that took place on March sixth and seventh of, uh, last year. So the next step in the strategic planning process was to form action plan committees. However, like most things in 2020, uh, we were interrupted by COVID. So, uh, we formed our action plan teams. We recently did that. We continued the work. Um, and the action plan teams are going to be responsible for developing the action plans for each of the goal areas that we've, we've developed during that planning weekend. Um, and the three goal areas are learner success, facilities and finance, and outreach and engagement. Um, and so what will happen after that is that once the committees complete the action plans, uh, we will present the action plans, uh, to the full strategic plan, uh, planning group. Uh, and we anticipate that to be sometime in late April. And of course, we're going to be, uh, sending information and out about that. So that will complete, uh, once, once we complete the action plans, we, we wrote our mission statement, uh, we'll complete the action plans. That will form our five-year strategic plan, and that will be presented to the public at our June, uh, board meeting. Um, and so again, we'll, uh, be inviting, uh, those people who participated in that planning weekend last March to come hear, um, about the action plan. So more to come. And I talked a little bit earlier about, um, the steering committee that we're going to put together for, uh, mental health and social emotional learning. Um, but I do want to say that we already got started on that uh, when we kicked off our Big Brothers, Big Sisters mentoring programs. So our kickoff meeting happened this past Tuesday at two o'clock virtually. Uh, and it was a huge success. Uh, fifteen high school mentors, uh, were on the call and fifteen Mill Pond student mentees. So the, the high school students are mentoring the Mill Pond students. Um, and again, the feedback from the parents has been fantastic. And, um, I participated in that kickoff meeting. Mr. Decker, our assistant superintendent was there along with, um, Mr., uh, I'm sorry, Mrs. Brown, who's our student assistance coordinator at Mill Pond, Mr. Faulkner, who's our student assistance coordinator at the high school, and, uh, Mrs. Neemek and Mr. Brandis were there as well. So, uh, it was just so, um, it, it was just so neat to watch the, uh, high school and the Mill Pond students interact with each other. And this is going to continue. Uh, we have another meeting next Tuesday. And then from this point forward till the end of the school year, we'll meet every other Tuesday for one hour. Uh, the meetings are facilitated by staff members at Big Brothers, Big Sisters, and Jenna has just been amazing. Um, and it will, will, we, we will include the data from that in our, uh, steering committee. So I know I had a lot to report, but we've got a lot of great things going on. Uh, that does conclude my comments. Board President McAvoy, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Clark. At this time, we'll transition into public comment. An audience member wishing to make a comment shall raise his or her hand and when called upon, state their name, address, or affiliation, the intention to make a statement. Comments shall be addressed to the board president. Comments shall be made on one issue at a time. Comments shall be limited to five minutes. No audience member will be recognized twice until all who wish to make a comment have been recognized. Mr. Merman, do you want to take it from here?
Thank you, Ms. McAvoy. So if you would like to make a public comment this evening, please make sure to use the raise hand button on your Zoom app. Or if you're calling in via telephone, you can use star nine. You will be called in turn to speak. So we'll start right now with, uh, Anne Leiter. Please unmute your microphone. State your name and address and begin your public comment.
Hi, I don't know where my microphone is. It fell down. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, Anne Marie Leiter, uh, out in the woods at Bamber. Happy New Year, everybody. Um, thanks for, once again, going virtual. Um, I saw on Facebook as I was trolling, Central Regional Superintendent wrote a letter to the governor. And I don't know if you guys are doing this or not, but, um, requesting uh, in-person, uh, attendance for parents or whatever for the indoor sports for, um, uh, the schools, um, that they have, uh, air filters and their gyms hold this many, like two thousand something. I don't know. I was wondering if you guys, um, are planning on doing any of this. And now I'm just thinking, is it still okay to ask questions, um, Dr. Clark? Or is it just like statements?
Um, Mrs. Leiter, I'm going to, um, allow Dr. Clark to answer your question.
But is it okay to ask questions? I'm sorry. Cause I remember that it's like not supposed to be question-answer thing.
Okay, well, we'll accept this question and Dr. Clark will answer it.
All right, and then, okay, thank you. And then I also wanted to know how you can sign up to have your Mill Pond student on, uh, involved in the Big Brother, Big Sister thing.
Okay, uh, thank you, Dr. Clark. Could you answer both questions, please?
Sure. So, uh, with regard to your first question, Mrs. Leiter, um, yes, uh, we, we, at the superintendent's roundtable, uh, Dr. Parala Panides did mention that he was writing that letter. Uh, but it's going to be representative of all of us in Ocean County. Um, you know, this, again, I know you know this, uh, not our rule. Uh, we're following NJ SIAA guidelines. And those guidelines are obviously based on the executive order. So, uh, we will see what comes of that and, and if there's a response. Um, and if there is, obviously, we will let the community know. And then as far as, uh, your second question, um, there is an, an application that the student and the parent can complete to, uh, serve as a mentee. Um, and I will ask Ms. Neemek to reach out to you tomorrow. Make sure that you get that.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thanks, guys, for all the hard work. I know this isn't easy under any circumstances and then adding this pandemic and everything. So thanks for all your work. I appreciate it.
You're welcome, and thank you, Mrs. Leiter.
You're welcome.
Okay, at this time, we'll recognize Anthony Rizzoli. Please unmute your microphone. State your name and address and begin your public comment.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, Mr. Rizzoli.
Okay, first off, um, I'm glad to see all the members of our Board of Education healthy, well, and, uh, present, uh, during this COVID situation. So that's, that's the good news. Um, now, some of the questions. I have a question on number eight of the current agenda. Why is there a change from the reorg meeting that says in the ad hoc committee for negotiations for the Lacey NJE, NJEA, um, that, um, Mr. Scanlon is the committee chairman, Ms. McAvoy, and Mr. Polino are doing the negotiations and Mr. Sensa was dropped. Uh, what's the reason for that?
I can answer that, Mr. Rizzoli. Mrs. Sensa requested to not be on the committee for personal reasons, for travel, to see her son down in South Carolina, and she didn't want to be held committed if she wanted to travel to see her son. So she, she requested that.
Okay, very good. That makes sense. Uh, but my concerns are, Mr. Scanlon at one time was a teacher. You, Ms. McAvoy, was a teacher. Um, are you receiving pensions from the NJEA? And you're going to negotiate pensions with the Lacey Education Association? Uh, that I have concerns about.
Yes, Mr. Rizzoli, that is true, and it's legal. And we have no affiliation to the NJEA, so it's perfectly acceptable. And we will negotiate as board members, and we will do a great job. Thank you.
Well, I, I hope so, but again, personally, I do not understand how someone receiving money from that bowl of rice can negotiate from that bowl of rice. But that's my opinion. All right, so let's let that go at this point. And if taxpayers can make their decision in the future as to what's going to happen. Um, I, I personally would put Mrs. Mrs. Quas on the committee. Um, the next thing I wanted to mention was, uh, I'd like to say congratulations to the Lacey Girls Soccer Team. It seems that it takes eleven girls in short pants and ponytails to have recognition uh, of athletic achievement in Ocean County as opposed to the football team, which it seems like everybody in the town is football crazy. But personally, I think that the coach for the Lacey Girls Soccer Team, who gets half the salary of the, that the football coach would get, should get a hell of a raise, and a football coach should be demoted. But that's my opinion. Next thing. Uh, I want to move on to, uh, policy five one one one. Uh, I was going to bring this up back in, uh, the reorganization meeting. Uh, but you know, I, I wasn't available. I was wherever I was that I can't mention. But, um, under F, F1 visas, where, now, my personal opinion is, if you're not a US citizen, if you don't have a legal green card, your parents don't. If you can't prove that you're a citizen or you're legally a resident uh, in Lacey, then you shouldn't be edu-, the kid shouldn't be educated, where it costs me my tax dollars. But the law says different. But under F1, there is a, uh, language in your policy that says, with the board's approval and the reimbursement, if demanded, by the board of tuition, that the child could be educated. Now, I would like to say, it's, it's, you know, it's going to be up to the board anyway. But I would take it a step further. If the child is under F1, which is example, a child of someone who works for the Pakistani embassy, the Saudi Arabia embassy, um, that, that child, if it needs a language teacher also, then not only tuition, but the amount of money that is being, my tax dollars being spent to be able to teach that child be charged to those people. So that was my concern about the language under five one 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 on, uh, charging them not only tuition, but any additional expense that it would take to educate that child, such as a language teacher or a linguistics, uh, translation person. If it's costing us tax dollars, then, uh, it should be charged back, which, under your policy, if you choose to do it, would be legal. And that's what I wanted to bring up, and I know my time is short, and that's all I have to say. Thank you very much. Have a nice day.
Thank you, Mr. Rizzoli.
So, Mrs. McAvoy, I just want to add a few things. Um, you know, Mr. Rizzoli just read a whole lot about, um, this particular policy. But there are two very clear distinctions between an F1 and a J1. I think since he brought it up, it's important to, uh, note the difference. First, I, I want to say this. The process is done through the US Department of Education and Homeland Security and all of those things regarding, uh, visas and green cards and things like that. That's all checked prior to, uh, a district ever even beginning the process of considering whether or not they're going to accept an F1 or a J1 student. But with an F1 student, the distinction is that the student needs to provide proof that the family can pay tuition. We don't, it's, it's not just a gimme. Um, and with the F1 student program, the student can be in, in any grade from K through twelve. So that's an F1 student. Typically, it's done through the Student Exchange Program. Um, and we've been growing that program, uh, to, you know, expand our sources of, of revenue. Uh, but right now, because of COVID, all of those things, uh, were put on hold. The J1 student, um, again, the process is done through, uh, the Department of Education, the US Department of Education and the Department of Homeland Security. Um, here, the student does not pay tuition, but is sponsored by private companies, and the company pays the tuition for the student. So what I mean by that is that the, the student and the student's family is not paying tuition, but we don't just accept the student just because we feel like it. Um, the student is sponsored by a private company, and the tuition is paid by that organization. The J1 student program is for high school students only. Typically, these students are coming to us because we have a program that either their high school in their country does not offer, or they're here for the experience, or they're here to learn a language, um, or they're here to attend our Amazing College Academy or our Humanities Leadership Academy or to participate in the expansive offerings of AP classes, and on and on it goes. Um, so I just wanted to point out that, you know, it's just not something that, you know, a student lands at our doorstep and the board just opens its doors and says, come on in. There's a process. And it's a lengthy process, by the way. Um, my secretary here handles all of that paperwork. And like I said, we haven't had any because of, uh, COVID restrictions. Um, but I, for one, I, you know, we, we talked at length about this program. And if, you know, we're constantly going to talk about revenue and bringing in sources of revenue, and a student is going to pay tuition to participate in our programs, and they go through the process appropriately, then, you know, there, there's no reason why we wouldn't, as a board, consider accepting them. So I just wanted to, you know, expand on that and, and make that distinction.
Thank you, Dr. Clark. Mr. Merman, any others?
Okay, if anybody else would like to speak at this time, you can raise your hand using your Zoom app. We'll give you a couple of seconds here. All right, Mrs. McAvoy, I don't see any, but just for a second, while I do have an open microphone, I just want to say thank you so much for the, uh, for the honor tonight. And, uh, it was really awesome to share that with Ginny Fitzgibbons. Um, I've known her for a very long time and one of the hardest-working people I know. And just thank you on behalf of both of us.
You're welcome. Very deserving for both of you. Mr. DeGeorge, is there any email public comments?
Mrs. McAvoy, we have received, uh, no comments via the Google Form platform uh, in either the earlier public comment session or this one.
Okay, great. Thank you. We're going to move on to committee reports. Mr. Scanlon, could you please start with finance?
Yeah, excuse me, I'm sorry. Yes, uh, finance, finance committee met uh, on, uh, on last week, and basically, the audit was submitted with the conclusion that our financial statements are free of error. There's no negative findings, and a district is in a strong financial condition. Our books are in very good shape, and I'd like to thank the business administrator and his department for keeping it that way. We also discussed the anticipated loss in state aid to our district. It's estimated this year that we're going to be down about $1.6 million more. Right now, department heads throughout the district are in the second round of budget meetings, trying to put together a budget and keeping in mind that we do have less revenue coming in the form of assistance from the state. And we're anticipating, along with that, we are anticipating increases in health coverage, as well as property and casualty insurances. So it's not all grim, but we are aware that we do have to be very careful. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Peters, you're going to add facilities to that report, correct?
That is correct, President Downing. Would you like me to do that now, or when I speak about my policy?
How about you do both at once?
Right now?
Sure.
Let's go. Okay, so I also attended the finance committee meeting with Mr. Scanlon, and we also discussed facilities a part of that. As some of you know, we consolidated the facilities committee back into finance, and Mr. Scanlon asked me to make comments on that. With Mr. DeGeorge there also, we spoke about, we have money set aside, and I believe last meeting, if the public remembers, I spoke about having money allocated, put aside that the state says, you need to put money aside, make sure the schools are updated and kept up to date and safe. We did discuss the new alarm system throughout the district, a public address system we talked about, and we also talked about new doors and security throughout the school. And that was it on that aspect of it. Something else was in Georgia, I forgot on that, for facilities?
No, I think just we kind of talked about one of the very important parts, responsibilities of the committee is to develop a plan for the future. So we talked about the five-year plan, what projects we would like to undertake over that five-year period. We're in the process of prioritizing them and assigning a estimated dollar amount to them, and discussing the future inflow of capital reserve funds to support that as far as we can. But I think, again, as always, you did a great job, and I appreciate your being on the committee.
Thank you. As far as policy, we had our policy meeting on January 11th. Thank you, Mr. Riggs, for serving. I am now chairperson of that, and you've put this on my shoulders, which I have no problem with. January 11th, we had myself, Ms. Klaus, Mr. Sensa, and Dr. Clark. Dr. Clark did an awesome presentation, kind of review for Ms. Sensa, she's been on the board for a while, and myself and Ms. Klaus regarding policy, how it works, how the functions are, how alert, what an alert is, all the acronyms that come with each policy, whether it's a regular regulation, or whether it's mandated. We talked about some bylaws, how they apply to our district. One thing I really enjoyed during this presentation did, Strauss Esme is our attorney for our policy, and, which I did not know until Dr. Clark mentioned it, out of 600 schools, they're in contact with 500 schools throughout the state. And what they do, as Strauss Esme does, is they'll send us an alert on a policy, then we'll review it, they'll make the revisions, we'll review it, and then we'll proceed to the board to, you know, bring it up for the first reading, the second reading to go through. So I'm really happy with them, everything they've done. They do a majority of the hardware for us, and we're just there to review it. She also explained that when a policy alert comes in, she will forward that to which department it goes to. So if it's something regarding finance, she'll forward that to the Finance Department. If it's something during athletics, then she'll send that to the Athletic Department. If it's something regarding special services, she'll make them aware to it, and it will go to that department. We talked about the policy is what, the regulation is how. We talked about regarding policies, we tabled 0155, and we spoke about 64700 electronic funds, and we also discussed emergency crisis situations, 8420 policies for that. And that was it. Thank you, Doctor, or I'm sorry, President McAvoy.
Thank you, Mr. Peters. Mrs. Downing, curriculum, please? Please unmute Mrs. Downing.
When I get done, you'll probably wish I was on mute. We had a curriculum meeting on January 11th. We did it virtually. The first thing we talked about was the CUSAC. We've been talking in previous meetings about our district preparing for the CUSAC process. CUSAC stands for the New Jersey Quality Single Accountability Continuum. On December 23rd, the governor signed into law A-4975, which gave certain districts the ability to postpone the CUSAC review, providing administrative relief for school districts and postponing the review to the 2023-24 school year. If a school was scored as high performing in the most recent review, they could take advantage of this postponement. Lacey was acknowledged as a high-performing district in their last review. So with all, so we are going to postpone our CUSAC until 2023. We're going to take advantage of that law, which will free up a lot of time for our administrators to get all the other things they have to get done, which is a great thing. So their time is freed up a little bit. The second thing we talked about was, there was a request to purchase scoring tables for the high schools' telecommunication classes. These tables will be used to support audiovisual equipment during school events, therefore expanding live broadcast capabilities. We also discussed ROTC. We got an update on where our application process is. This is a very timely process. So in the meantime, the administration is budgeting for an ROTC club for next year. Dr. Clark talked about our Big Brothers, Big Sisters program, so I'm going to skip my comments because she already covered that. She also talked about strategic planning, which I had something written for that. She covered it all. And also, the Lacey Township School District Social, Emotional, Mental Health Steering Committee. Dr. Clark updated you on that as well. We talked about LEAD, L-E-A-D. It stands for Law Enforcement Against Drugs. We are trying to work out finances, so to speak, to get this program up and running. Our police department would be involved in this. So we have to coordinate funds and time and see if our police department will be able to do that for us this year. When I was interim principal in Beach Haven, they had this program, and it was fantastic. So I'm hoping that we'll be able to work. I know our finance committee is meeting with the Township Committee representatives, so hopefully, this will be one of the discussions on your agenda. We also talked about technology. This Chromebooks, the student Chromebooks and teacher laptops have left China, and they're on their way in a slow boat to the United States to a facility in South Jersey where they will service them and prepare them for our students. So when we get them at our front door, they'll be all ready to pass out to all our K through four students. These computers were purchased, if you remember, with the CARES Emergency Relief Grant back, I guess over the summer it was. Ms. Dr. Clark also talked about the Parent University. It's going to be held February 4th, and I hope a lot of you can attend that virtually. And keep in mind, be in tune to the newsletters. We're going to have newsletters from our principals. I believe they're submitting them bimonthly, and they're going to be connected to their Facebook pages as well. It looks like a very good program that they're using to write up these newsletters. I know the high school and middle school are already doing it, and I believe Lenoka is already doing it. So keep watching for that. Check their webpages. And I want to thank Dr. Clark for reinstating the Proud Paws at Mill Pond. I think that club at Mill Pond is so important. And this year, I hope we get the right name on our budget, so we don't cut that again, because that's a really important club at that age level. That's it, Mrs. McAvoy. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Downing. You're welcome. At this time, we're going to have board comments. Who's at the bottom? Mr. Scanlon, could you please start?
Okay, yes. First, I'd like to congratulate our seniors of the month, Noah Hammond and Madison Smith, and Mario Ramirez as the vocational student of the month. And of course, the unsung hero, Madison English. Congratulations to her also, and to our staff award winners, Ginny Fitzgibbons and Jeremy Merman, both very deserving people. I also just want to, I want to add to my comments from before as to the budget. We will be having, I discussed this with Mr. DeGeorge today, and mentioned it's Dr. Clark. Also, as for the budget, we will be having workshop sessions before the first reading. And the first reading of the budget, when it's first presented to the public, is in the middle of March. So sometime in the end of February, very early part of March, the entire board will meet. It will be presented to the public. It's not for public input, though. This will be for the public to observe our working together to put together the preliminary budget. Then so it'll be open for the public to observe. The date of that meeting will be announced at the February meeting, when we're closer to the actual time. Between the first presentation of the budget and the adoption of the budget, we'll have one or two additional workshop sessions to allow all board members to express concerns, have input, and discuss what's being presented. Again, it will be open to the public to observe, but it's not for public input at that time. The date or dates will be announced at the March meeting for that. And then in May, as always, the public will have their opportunity to express their thoughts and concerns at the final meeting, where we do the final presentation for the budget. So I just wanted to mention, I had mentioned that before, that that was one of the things that I would like to see done, and we are working on that and going forward on it. Okay, that sum up my comments for the night. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Scanlon. Next, can we have Mrs. Claus, please?
Can you hear me, Don?
Yes, we can.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, I'm on my phone. I got kicked off my computer, so.
Okay, loud and clearly.
Okay, okay, good. All right, so I've been pretty busy the last three weeks, just trying to catch up. And I'm grateful, actually, to Ms. Downing. She's taken me under her wing, and I call her all the time and text her all the time, and I just want to say thank you, Linda, for that. I really appreciate all the extra help you've been giving me. I also attended my first policy meeting. I just wanted to thank Dr. Clark for the orientation, just like Mr. Peter said. It was wonderful. You really stepped me through the process, how we get our policies, how we implement them. It was very helpful. I also had the opportunity to share my experiences, as well as some of the community's experiences along the way that I've learned through my campaign to administration. The goal of the conversation was to simply see if we can provide a better forum between our students, parents, and the guidance. Also, from an advertising perspective, we discussed what information we can pull from the systems that we have to market, to hopefully capture more revenue, to get more kids into our district. And also, it helps with the families that we have now, their decision-making, when they choose to either, you know, go to a two-year college or four-year college. We have a lot of information. I think we just need to pull it a little bit, just to show, you know, our families, you know, the levels of where they could go for their path. Also, just quickly, if you didn't have the opportunity to watch the reorg meeting, I would just like to thank everyone again for your overwhelming support. My purpose for running was not for any personal agenda, but just to give support to administration, staff, students, and the community, to hopefully improve our ratings, outcomes, and have better possibilities for our students. So thank you again. And that's it, Ms. McAvoy. Thank you.
Oh, thank you, Mrs. Claus. Mrs. Desenza, next, please.
Yes, thank you. Congratulations to our senior students of the month, Noah Hamouda, Madison Smith, a vocational senior, Mario Ramirez, and unsung hero, Madison English. And congratulations also to the staff members of the month. Thank you for all your hard work. I'd like to offer apologies in advance to the high school class of 2021. We don't know yet what June will hold. All we can do is continue to hope for normal. I thank all the parents and staff. As we juggle the navigation of remote and in-person learning, the district is continuing to follow all the recommendations of the Ocean County Health Department. We have a very busy year ahead of us, and please note that the next meeting will also now be on a Thursday evening, February 18th at 6:00 PM. And thank you to all those attending this meeting tonight. I'm done, Mrs. McAvoy.
Wow, Mrs. Desenza, that was the quickest I've ever heard you. Thank you. Okay, Mr. Peters, please.
Thank you, President McAvoy. I had the opportunity to be on the panel for the staff member of the month. And I'll tell you what, it was a tough decision, and I asked Dr. Clark never to be on it again, because some of the people on there were really, really great, great teachers and a great asset to the district, and it was really tough making that decision. So, but no, I would be on it again. I was just joking. Congratulations to Ginny, Jeremy, I know them both. I worked with them both on a personal level, and they do an awesome job. I was also asked by President McAvoy to do a ex-student spotlight. Did I call that correct, Mrs. McAvoy?
Yes, spotlight on graduates.
Yes, we have some great, great things here about some past students. The first student I picked, his name is Kevin Trans, and I have a quick bio on here. Kevin joined the Lacey Mat Cats Youth Wrestling Program at age four, where he competed until reaching the middle school. During his time as a youth wrestler, he was with the Lacey Mat Cats. Kevin was coached by Coach Doug Moore and Jeff Garthier. Kevin competed in New Jersey State Wrestling Championships and reached a championship podium several times. In 2003, Kevin was fourth in the state. 2005, placed eighth in the state. In 2006, Kevin took second place in the state. Kevin wrestled for the Lacey Middle School under Coach, myself, Skip Peters, and enjoyed much success. Upon returning to high school, Kevin took a hiatus during his senior year and rejoined the Lacey Lions under Coach Tom Pfister. Kevin was able to reach the regionals for the states and placed third in District 24. In 2009, Kevin participated in the Lacey Township Police Department Junior Police Academy, where he was awarded overall physical fitness award. Upon graduating Lacey Township, Kevin enlisted in the United States Marine Corps in April 25, 2016. Upon completing his recruit training, he entered the Infantry Training Battalion, where he became a machine gunner. He was assigned to the Second Battalion, Second Marine Regiment of the Weapons Platoon Machine Gun Section, Easy Company, and is stationed at Capital Zone, North Carolina. Kevin served as a team leader for over one year during the deployment in Norway. Upon returning from deployment, he was meticulously promoted to corporal after attending the Advanced Machine Gunners Course. Kevin then served as squad leader during a deployment in Japan. Upon returning deployment, Kevin became Easy Company Machine Gun Section leader and was promoted to rank of sergeant. Currently, Kevin is acting in the Easy Company Weapons Platoon Sergeant. Kevin is preparing for his third deployment in the near future. Kevin credits his family, his Kevin credits his family, his wrestling coaches, and many of the wonderful features of Lacy Township for the discipline and hard work ethic of the United States Marine Corps demands. Kevin is due to complete his military commitment in 2022, at which times he plans returning back to his hometown of Lacy Township. Kevin aspires to becoming a Lacy Township police officer and would like to give back to the community that thanks him so much. My second postgraduate, and I'll reveal her name at the end of my compliments here on her. She is a graduate, 2013 graduate of Lacy Township High School. During her time at Lacy Township High School, she participated in basketball, the National Alliance Society, and the Integrative Virtual Club. She worked part-time at a local business and also worked with the Lacy Township Recreation Department. After graduating from Lacy, she attended Rutgers University, New Brunswick. She spent four years part of the Residential Hall Association, she serves as Director of College Avenue, and then went to become a resident assistant and apartment assistant. She graduated in 2017 with her Bachelor's of Social Work and made the Dean's List all four years. From 2017, 2018, she took a year off school and served as a program supervisor as summer in the parks with the Lacy Township Recreation Department. In 2018, she started a dual master's program at the University of Pennsylvania where she received her Master's in Science in Counseling and Mental Health Services and professional counselor. She graduated in 2020. She currently now lives in Williamsport, PA. She is a full-time K through 12 school counselor. She also works part-time as a mental health counselor and that student's name is Caleb Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Peters. And congratulations to Kevin and your daughter for spotlighting them. For my comments, I just would like to remind everyone to please check the website and look at Dr. Clark's superintendent report, there's so much in there about all the schools and you can get a better understanding than everything that we say in one night. And I just want to say how pleased I am about the new Social Emotional and Mental Health Steering Committee. I think it's very much needed and it was, will be a good thing for the district. I'm looking forward to a productive year. We have seven, six other board members that are very excited and motivated and I think going forward, we're going to do the best we can for the community. And that's the end of my comments and we are going to.
McAvoy, excuse me, can I make a quick comment?
You sure may.
You skipped me.
Oh my gosh, Mrs. Downing.
That's all right. It's very short. I just wanted also to congratulate the students of the month and I too sat on the students of the month and our unsung hero as well. And I also sat on that committee to choose the faculties of the month and as Mr. Peters said, it was a really difficult decision. We have so many talented professionals in our district and staff members and Mrs. Fitzsimmons and Mr. Merman, great selection, they're both fabulous additions to our school community. So thank you, thank you, Mrs. McAvoy, that's it.
All right, and Mrs. Downing, I'm very sorry.
Oh, that's all right.
Can I add one more thing about that? I'd like to add on to Mrs. Downing.
You may.
Any teachers or employees that submitted for a teacher first, teacher of the month or employee of the month, if your person that you submitted there did not make it, you can apply again.
Yes.
That's it, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Peters. Okay, we are going to go on to new business. The first thing will be item number one on page two, meeting minutes, can we have a motion, please?
I move, we approve the minutes.
I'll second it.
Okay, is there any discussion? Roll call, please, Mr. George.
Mrs. Claus.
Um, I'm sorry, what do we need to?
Number one, number one, Kim.
Voting on the minutes?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Scanlon.
So I'm going to say yes, but I'm actually going to abstain from the December meeting and the private session for December.
Okay, so you're voting yes on the reorg?
Yes.
Okay, and you're abstaining on the other two, okay.
Mr. Scanlon.
Yes.
Mr. Peters.
Yes.
Mrs. DeSenza.
Yes.
Mrs. Downing?
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy.
Yes. Next is item number two, list of bills, totally $9,412,204.63. We have a motion, please?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Claus.
Yes.
Mr. Scanlon.
Yes.
Mr. Peters.
Yes, but I need to abstain on 951181 and 173251.
Thanks, sir. Mrs. DeSenza.
Yes, on all except 16 clothing allowances and I will email you the numbers.
Thank you, appreciate that. Mrs. Downing?
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy?
Yes. Next, next will be the finance items, items number three to seven, budget transfers, self-reporting, the annual audit to Saylor Solar Renewable Energy Credits, and the annual appointment of the Public Agency Compliance Officer. We have a motion, please?
I'll move it.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please?
Mrs. Claus.
Yes.
Mr. Scanlon.
Yes.
Mr. Peters.
Yes, and thank you for what you do, Mr. George.
Thank you, sir. Mrs. DeSenza.
Yes.
Mrs. Downing?
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Item number eight, ad hoc committee, move that the board approve the formation of the following ad hoc committees as revised since January 4th, 2021. Can we have a motion, please?
Move it as revised.
Second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion?
Was it necessary to accept the resignation of Mrs. DeSenza?
No, it was not.
Okay.
We're just revising. Good question.
Just asking.
Good question, Mr. Scanlon. Can we have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Claus.
Yes.
Mr. Scanlon.
Yes.
Mr. Peters.
Yes.
Mrs. DeSenza.
I'll abstain on that one.
Mrs. Downing?
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy?
Yes.
Motion carries, thanks.
Next, we have items number nine and 10, first read policies and regulations and the second read bylaws, policies and regulations. Can we have a motion, please?
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call?
Mrs. Claus.
Yes.
Mr. Scanlon.
Yes.
Mr. Peters.
Yes.
Mrs. DeSenza.
Yes.
Mrs. Downing?
Yes, and 0155 is not on there right now, right? Okay, so yes.
McAvoy.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. McAvoy.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next, we are on item. The donations, B on page four, we have a motion to accept all the donations?
I'll make it. Second.
Any discussion? Okay, roll call?
Mrs. Claus.
Yes, and thank you.
Mr. Scanlon.
Yes, and thank you.
Mr. Peters.
Yes, and thank you very much.
Mrs. DeSenza.
Yes, and thank you to all.
Mrs. Downing?
Yes, thank you.
Mrs. McAvoy?
Yes, thank you. Okay, next we are on programs and curriculum, letter C, page four, can we have a motion, please?
I'll move it.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call?
Mrs. Claus.
Yes.
Mr. Scanlon.
Yes.
Mr. Peters.
Yes.
Mrs. DeSenza.
Yes.
Mrs. Downing?
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next, D, professional days and workshops, can we have a motion, please?
I'll move it. Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please?
Mrs. Claus.
Yes.
Mr. Scanlon.
Yes.
Mr. Peters.
Yes.
Mrs. DeSenza.
Yes.
Mrs. Downing?
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Great. Next, we're on page five, certificated personnel, items one to seven, can we have a motion, please?
Motion.
Second, okay.
Any discussion? Roll call?
Mrs. Claus.
Yes.
Mr. Scanlon.
Yes.
Mr. Peters.
Yes.
Mrs. DeSenza.
Yes.
Mrs. Downing?
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy?
Yes, and I just want to congratulate Mr. Angelo for receiving, getting up to a Masters plus 60, and Stephanie Law for getting up to a Masters plus 15, and yes.
Thank you, motions carry then.
Okay, next we're on F, non-certificated personnel, items one to four. Motion, please?
Motion, Peters.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call?
Mrs. Claus.
Yes.
Mr. Scanlon.
Yes.
Mr. Peters.
Yes.
Mrs. DeSenza.
Yes.
Mrs. Downing?
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy?
Yes.
Motion's carry.
Okay, and that concludes our January 21st meeting. We hope everyone stays safe and we'll see you in February. Thank you.
Thank you, nice job.
Thank you.
Motion. Motion. Done.
Motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Good night, everyone.
Good night, everyone, thank you.
Good night.